Good evening. Welcome to the July 18th meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Kathy, would you please take the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lark, would you do us the honor of reading the land acknowledgement?
I'd be honored too.
Thank you.
We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shahabish people and their successors, the Tulalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the June minutes of the Everett Planning Commission?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Kathy, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Abstain.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Chair Chatters.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have an opportunity for commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioners who wish to report? Okay, then we'll turn it over to staff for comments.
Good evening, Chair Chatters. Members of the commission, I'm Yorick Stevens, WAJDA Planning Director. Couple items for you today. Middle Housing Deliverables to the Department of Commerce. We discussed these a couple of meetings ago, and after a, I'd call it a near Herculean effort, staff pulled together a complete package of deliverables for that, recognizing that it's somewhat of an interim deliverable because the true deliverable is part of the periodic update. It's just a matter of the timing of that grant program ending at the end of June, and delivered it to the State Department of Commerce. There were four deliverables in there. One of those four is attached to your Housing Element memo. That's the racially disparate impacts analysis piece of that. There were three other deliverables. Those will be posted and available for anyone's perusal on the web on the periodic update website, which is everettwa.gov/2044. Look on the left side for middle housing. We are now, now that we prepared those deliverables for the Department of Commerce, we're cutting them back up again into their constituent parts and finding their home where they will be revised and refined over the course of the periodic update, and then find a home, some in the environmental impact statement, some in the plan itself, some in the regulations. Still much more conversation to come, but we appreciated the support from the state for that work program, and we found it very valuable. And even the kind of abbreviated timeline was helpful to get that piece thoroughly reviewed, although we're certainly not done with it. Also want to say that it represents an initial concept to start the conversation. There is a package we walked through a couple of months ago, all of the development regulations that could be associated with middle housing. And if you remember, there were blank cells next to each one of those for us to fill out. We took your comments and suggestions and worked with, with staff on that and filled them out, but that's not the answer. That is a potential answer. It is a good start for the conversation, and we will be back to talk much, much more about that. Other items that we're working on, accessory dwelling units is coming before the city council in this room tomorrow evening at about this time for a public hearing and potential council consideration. Excited to have that project get to potentially the final step of it. We've been hearing a lot of public comments, and once that meeting is over, I'll deliver a report to you on what the council ultimately decided and a summary of what other public comments, since you worked long and hard on that item too, you can hear what folks were telling the city council about it. And then last week at the council's Built Environment Committee, we provided another briefing on the Park District Development, another item that you've been involved in. This one was focusing on the right-of-way vacation and dedication aspect of that, but it also included a little bit of an overview of the project as a whole, as that design continues to evolve slightly and hone in on its target, which is a complete application to the city, to the planning department for the planned development overlay development agreement, vacation, dedication, and depending on the outcome of the specific amendments, you'll see one of those items in here today, potentially a comprehensive plan amendment. Last item in staff comments is public com, written public comment protocol. I wanted to let you know where, where we landed on kind of an interim protocol, but wanted to run that by you since you're the audience for such public comments. We obviously collect all the public comments that are submitted in time for the packet that is mailed and emailed to you, usually on around Thursday, the day, the week before these meetings, and we include those in the packets that are mailed and emailed. For comments that continue to come in after the packet is mailed and up until the meeting starts, which is fantastic, we welcome and encourage that. We want to not send you lots and lots of emails. I'm not exactly sure how the council gets it, but I think they do get a trickle of emails constantly for public comments, but want to be respectful of your time and your, your lives and your, your work and everything. So the proposal, and we didn't, we didn't do it exactly this time, but the proposed protocol going forward is that up until the packet mails, everything that we receive is included in that packet. After the packet is mailed around Thursday, on Monday afternoon, we would compile all the comments that come in by that time and send them to you by email. That gives you an evening and the next day to have the opportunity to read those comments. Everything that comes in after Monday afternoon and before your meeting would be printed and put at your places. I guess, does that work for you?
Commissioners, how do you feel about that?
Okay, fantastic. We'll, we'll write that up and make that, make that clear to members of the public so they know what happens with their comments.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for me. I'm going to turn it over to Becky and Karen here, and I'm going to switch seats down there, but I won't be far.
Yorick, did that conclude staff comments?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we, we now have an opportunity before we jump into our business this evening for open public comment. This is not the public hearing. This is open public comment on any topic that the public would wish to speak on. Please step to the mic, state your name. If you would also state your neighborhood, that would be helpful, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
...19.17 of the EMC code. And what I want to say tonight is that my understanding is this particular set of information is targeted at developments over 10,000 square feet. And there are, when that was passed, there was, there really was not representative notice given to the neighborhood and residents such as myself, although there may have been newspaper notifications. There really wasn't the, the open discourse between all of us neighbors. And what that resulted in is that we ended up having some unintended consequences in that language. And in, some of those unintended consequences include negative impacts to property values as well as really not allowing the port, or I should say, letting the port no longer have an obligation to work with us neighbors to mitigate environmental factors, both for their dock workers as well as our neighbors, such as noise, light, dust, other items that are listed in that, in that code chapter I referenced a few minutes ago. So our, our group, the port area residents, have put together a set of language that we would like to propose that this group take forward to our, our city council for approval. And I'd like to just read that now so that we have reference for that in more comments later tonight. Honorable commissioners, at the June 20th Planning Commission meeting, you requested suggestions for accomplishing the fundamental purposes of the port compatibility area while avoiding unintended consequences to existing port area residents. Those unintended consequences are, one, diminution of property value caused by the PCA overlay; two, interference with the neighbors' efforts to persuade the port to mitigate its primarily noise impacts on the neighborhood. Both of these consequences arise from the adoption of the EMC 19.17 in 2020 without adequate public notice, showing the entire Rucker Hill neighborhood within PCA, implying that the neighborhood is now akin to an industrial buffer zone that exists to absorb the port's negative impacts. Taking the port and the city at their word, that the PCA is intended only to notify developers of multiple-family developments, that they should consider measure to mitigate port impacts. This can be accomplished with one simple amendment. Eliminate all references to a PCA in Chapter 19.17 EMC, including the map, and replace it with a footnote to EMC 19.05.080, Table 5-1, Residential Use Table, stating, "Applicants for permits for new multifamily residential dwelling projects that exceed 10,000 square feet and that are within XX feet," that's a TBD feat, "of the Port of Everett boundary, property boundary, will receive a notice from the planning department that their proposed development may be subject to port-generated noise and other impacts, and their permit application will be forwarded to the port management for their suggestions on how to incorporate mitigation measures into their development proposal. This regulation does not affect existing uses or structures and shall not be construed to relieve the port from complying with their obligation to comply with noise regulations and take reasonable steps to mitigate noise and other impacts on nearby properties." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Yeah. Do I leave this, do I just leave this here?
You know, I'll take that, I'll take that.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have additional folks?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to notice that the testimony we just heard is the subject of a public hearing that's on our agenda tonight.
That is correct.
And so it needs to be incorporated to, within the public hearing.
It is their choice. It is their choice. They can speak during open public comment. The public is welcome to speak during open public comment, or you can wait until the public hearing. It is your choice. So I will leave that up to you, the community, to choose. If anyone would like to speak during open, or during comment, this comment time, you're welcome to, or you're welcome to hold your comments for later on in the agenda. Okay. We will turn it back over to staff. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Stewart. I'm an environmental planner in Everett Planning Department, and I will be doing the presentation tonight on the specific amendment requests. By way of background, this is essentially our annual docket, but we're combining this year's and next year's into one so that we can address these proposed amendments through our comprehensive plan periodic update process. And we have nine applications. One is consolidated with 44 different applicants that have been reviewed by staff doing an initial analysis, and we have prepared, staff has prepared a memorandum, and there's copies of that available on the table for the public, and it was included in your packet. And this will, the memorandum addresses what the process is for these specific amendments and, and how it, what the criteria were that staff used to determine whether or not to advance the proposals. And then, in addition, there's specific staff reports that were done for each of the nine applications. So I would recommend that as I, as we're going through these nine, that you reference the more detailed information that you have in your staff report. I haven't included all of that in this, in the slides. Now, just by way of quick review, the specific amendment process is a little bit unique from our docket process, our standard docket process, partly because we're in the middle of updating our comprehensive plan as well as the development regulations. So there's a lot of moving, potential moving pieces over the next year or year and a half. Right now, we're on step two of the, the white boxes, so we're deciding, you're deciding tonight, you're helping us, I'll decide which proposals to advance. And so you have your staff recommendation, which is the first bullet, and then as the planning commission is meeting tonight and learning about these applications and deliberating, we would like you to make a recommendation, if you can, at the end of the evening. And then your recommendation will be forwarded to the city council for them to determine essentially what is the final docket, is typically what we call it, that will advance and then be, these proposals will be analyzed in the environmental impact statement, that third item there. So that's where we're at in this process, and I believe you were briefed on this at your last meeting. So to try to, in an organized way, at least for staff and hopefully the public and commissioners will find that this helps, we're going to take each of these nine, one at a time. I have a couple of slides. So here's an example of an amendment that's been proposed to adjust the heights for two blocks that are fronting Broadway from 34th Street to the 3,400 block through the 3,500 block of Broadway. And the applicant has asked to increase the maximum building height map, and that's actually in our code. So right now, you'll notice a couple of things with the map. So the crosshatching is the subject area, and the purple line that is depicting to the north and to the east of the purple line is Metro Everett. And right now, this is a snapshot on your slide of our height map, and it shows that the crosshatched area would be allowed a maximum building height of five floors. What the applicant is asking for is to allow that to be increased up to 11 floors in a mixed-use building. And that is, has been evaluated by staff, but their desired outcome then is to also modify a table in the code that will not then reduce the western portion of height on the site as a step down. So, our staff recommendation, again, you've got a couple of pages, you can look at more of the, the maps and the staff rationale, but summarizing staff comments, because this is in Metro Everett, with the growth alternatives that have been presented so far with our comprehensive plan update, Metro Everett is going to be considered for high-rise development in both Alternatives 2 and Alternative 3. So because of that, staff is recommending that the planning commission determine that the requested outcome by the applicant to increase the maximum height should be incorporated in our periodic update environmental review that we're doing over the next year, which will be looking at the Alternatives 2 and 3 in particular. So I am going to pause there, see if I've confused everybody with my staff presentation, and then what I think might be helpful is, just in case the applicant is in the audience, give them an opportunity to speak, and then open up a public hearing just on this item in case somebody wants to talk about it, and then we can proceed.
So, thank you. And so just to be clear, we will be opening a public hearing on each of these items. Okay. The applicant, Mr. Clark, are you in attendance today? Mr. Clark, would you like to speak to your application? If you would, please step to the podium.
I can answer some questions.
Or you could see if there's some questions.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, you explained it quite well. It's that simple, so. Little taller height in that zone is also.
Okay.
Question?
Nothing, nothing additional to add then, Mr. Clark? Okay, commissioners, do you have questions?
Hi, Adam.
Hi.
Is there a particular project that you have in mind or that one of your clients has in mind for this?
There, there's some people looking at properties there to put some mixed use on there. Just a little more height is desired, so.
I have a quick clarification for staff. So as it transitions from what its current height is down to the different height zoning, there, will there be any required reductions in height on one side of the building versus the other? I know we talked about transition, so can you guys speak to that a little more in depth?
So essentially, it's in the code right today, so the step down, and I can't say I'm an expert on that. I will look at the staff report. We attempted to.
I can explain what I remember there, so.
Okay. That would be helpful to talk about the existing step down.
Yeah, so essentially, the, the western portion of Broadway, between Broadway and the alley, I think it's the western 50 feet of that has to step down to, I believe it was 35 feet. I don't, I don't have the height with me right now, but, which presented some very odd geometries and whatnot when you're, you're trying to put some things together, so. So that was, that was the reasoning behind that, was just to, to be able to get some massing and whatnot that, that equals out on both sides of the site, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. You may have a seat. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing on this, this matter?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak to this item? Do we have anyone on, online who'd like to speak to it?
I have two guests tonight. Mr. Koenig, would you like to speak on this item tonight? Looks like he's still muted. Mr. Mohammed, would you like to speak on this item tonight?
Okay. And I, I think that Mr. Koenig and Mr. Mohammed are aware of the instructions to participate remotely, but just in case they're not, let me just read those briefly before we move on. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone. If you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comment, I'll ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. Okay? If we have no one who wants to speak to this matter, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
So moved.
Okay. Kathy, would you take the role on that, please? I don't think we actually took the role to open it like we should have. We'll call this a practice round.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Chair Chatters.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next application I'd like to talk about is relating to driveway access for alley lots, and the request is to amend two sections of the code, and it would prohibit driveway access from streets on alley lots, and then there's certain conditions that have been laid out in the application, and I will not go through those in detail. So staff has done an initial review of these proposed amendments and determined that they would be likely consistent with the review criteria that are in our code as well as the comprehensive plan. So staff's recommendation is to advance this, the applicant's request for further analysis and consideration in the periodic update.
The applicant, Mary Cunningham, are you in attendance this evening? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing on this item?
So moved. I found my place.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Chair Chatters.
Yes. Okay, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Kathy, would Mr. Koenig or Mr. Mohammed like to speak to this item? Or any other participants who might have joined us online?
Mr. Mohammed, would you like to testify? He muted. Mr. Koenig, would you like to testify? No response.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this item? You're the man of the night, Commissioner Lark.
I feel typecast.
Second.
All right. Kathy.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Chair Chatters.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, our next application is from the Everett Housing Authority, and it also relates to height, but it's height not in the code, it's within our comprehensive plan. So the land use element, Policy 2.11.1, there's a table, and that's shown in your staff report, and the applicant is asking to amend the maximum height limit in that table for residential multifamily, and the specific language they've provided is underlined there, and I will read that. So currently, it's 10-story limit. The applicant has proposed, or 15 stories in a planned development overlay containing an area of at least five acres. So based on staff's initial review, the proposed change is likely consistent with criteria in the code. Staff recommendation is that this item should be addressed prior to the periodic update and along with the pending Park District Development Review process, because that's the specific development that this would immediately affect. There are other places in the city that could meet this criteria if this amendment was approved, but there's nothing pending right now, so. Any questions about this application?
Just a moment. Do we have, do we have anyone from EHA here to speak to this application?
Here, Demi. We don't have any particular comments, but we're available for questions.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions for EHA? Would you, would you like them to step to the podium?
They're not specific to EHA.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yet.
You can proceed with your question, Commissioner Finch.
So, I'm reading this, and thank you for clarifying that there are more than one parcels of property in the city that apply. Why not address this specifically in the PDO application?
I believe that that is generally what's recommended by staff, although we didn't say PDO. So, our recommendation is to address this with the pending Park District Development Review Process. And my understanding, although I'm not directly involved in that, is that that is the subject of a PDO.
I will add, depending on exactly what the question was, the Plan Development Overlay is equivalent to a rezone, and it must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, you cannot go outside the bounds of the comprehensive plan. In this case, there's that cap of 10 stories. I also think it's worth noting that with the alternatives and the geographies and all of that that we've been talking about, the mid-rise, low-rise, it is almost certain that that table is going to be replaced in the periodic update. So, the shelf life of this amendment is until the periodic update. So, that's why I would say it is nearly impossible that it would apply to anywhere else, because it would take longer than that for a development application to get going.
Okay, so as I understand it, this is a prerequisite to going down the PDO path. It doesn't weaken the city's leverage or negotiating position in reconciling that PDO.
Correct. And it would be decided ultimately on the same day as the PDO. So, all four ordinances, the Plan Development Overlay, the Development Agreement, the Street Vacation, and this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, although I think the order is exactly opposite of that, would all be decided by the City Council at the same meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. You have further questions?
Commissioner Zalinski, did you have questions? No? Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing on this matter?
I'll motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you. Do we have members of the public who would like to speak to this item?
The online folks aren't able to speak, so.
Okay. Looks like we have to pause for some technical issues to be addressed. I don't know. This is small. So, he actually was unmuted and still couldn't speak.
We probably won't.
Were we able to resolve the issue of why they're not able to be heard? No?
So, we're seeking a solution.
Okay.
If it works for you, I think this should be okay, that let's just see if we can get the solution figured out by the time you do your deliberations. I'm pretty sure Mr. Koenig wants to speak on his item, so maybe we can keep going with things, but make sure that we circle back to this.
Okay. At the time that this is resolved, just flag us, and we can reopen the public hearing on this matter, because I don't think there's anyone here. So, if there are comments, it would come from the folks who aren't able to speak online. Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this item, understanding that we may reopen if we can get our technical difficulties resolved?
Make a motion to close.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Kathy, when you're ready.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, our next application is a proposal to remove the port compatibility overlay. And that's the map designation that you see on the slide is from Everett Municipal Code 19.17.100. And then the code section 19.17.110 are the specific requirements for properties, for actions that would be within that designated area. And with this particular one, my understanding is at the June meeting that the Planning Commission agreed that it would be appropriate to consolidate what are essentially 44 individual property owners who submitted timely, specific amendment applications. And so, we have the complete list. I apologize, last time, there were a few names that were left out, but we now have everybody listed. So, if there's somebody who feels that their name is still left out, please let me know, and we'll try to track down what happened. So, that's that application. And staff comments. So, based on our initial review, these proposed amendments to the code would likely be consistent with the criteria in Chapter 15.03 EMC as well as the comprehensive plan. So, staff's recommendation is that these amendments should advance and then would be under further analysis and consideration as part of the periodic update. And those are my comments on this item.
Thank you. So, since we have a large number of applicants, do we have an applicant who would like to speak to this issue? Any of you can certainly speak to it during public hearing, but for the purpose of just speaking to it in general, do we have one person who feels they would like to do that? Please step to the podium. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name, please.
Chris, so three thirty-three.
Thank you.
So, just to give you a real brief history, this proposal in a modified form was apparently originally brought forward in 2018. It was, at that time, withdrawn due to strong community objections, very similar to what you'll probably be hearing shortly. It was then brought forward again in 2020. Inexplicably, given the previous history, less than two years prior, there was no meaningful public notice to the residents, even the residents who had specifically complained in front of this body. And it was packaged up with the larger rethink zoning process. In connection with that larger process, there were a couple of community neighborhood meetings. One was the Port Gardner Neighborhood Meeting. One was the Online North Forum. We did do a public records request, and it appeared that the handouts and all the materials prepared for the residents in that meeting included some very misleading and not accurate materials, which didn't even mention this amendment or show it on the zoning maps. I met with planning staff, who at the time confirmed that it did not appear there was any specific targeted notice around this issue. So, if that's changed between then and now, I'd like a chance to address that. But that's what we found from our public records request. And as a factual matter, nobody that we've run into in the neighborhood had any idea that that had been re-adopted. I found out just a couple of months ago, when I attended another Port Gardner Neighborhood Meeting where York outlined the upcoming 2044 Everett Process and included a zoning map. So, when I noticed a port compatibility area on the zoning map, York may recall that I was not happy and have been alerting neighbors ever since. And again, nobody was very happy about it, and you'll hear more about that tonight. Our main concerns are the potential effect on property values and also the concern that it may reduce our leverage to work with the port on noise issues, which has been a continuing issue in the neighborhood going back decades. We've provided a supplemental submittal that you guys should have seen, which would basically eliminate the PCA references from the code and simply add a footnote to the residential use table. I think Nate already read this proposal, and it should have been provided to you as well. We feel this would accomplish the fundamental purpose of the PCA without imposing these unintended collateral consequences on the existing port area residents. So, turn it over to my neighbors at this point. Let's see if any questions.
Yeah, let's see if Commissioners have questions. Sure.
Just so I can track the argument, what are the bullet points, the key collateral consequences that you guys are concerned about?
Potential effect on property damages and property values. The neighbors will be speaking to this more particularly. And again, although we understand that, as the port has pointed out in its submittal, there's nothing explicitly in the PCA amendments that directly, as they would put it, affects property values. I'm not sure how one would directly affect property values. It's always an indirect, you know, set of circumstances. But we're very concerned that the property value would be diminished, and we're concerned that even though there's nothing explicitly preventing us from going to the port with noise complaints, that if they're able to point to a provision in the code that essentially says, I will read it, since I've got it in front of me. "Your property is located within the port compatibility area. Occupants of properties within the PCA may be subject to inconveniences or discomforts, including but not limited to noise, glare, fumes, dust, construction activity, smoke, traffic, hours of operations, low overhead flights, and other maritime activities." And I guess I would put the question to you folks. If you had, you know, found that out about a property you were considering purchasing, could that raise a concern about your property values?
Additional questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Ms.
Question, but not for the applicants.
Okay.
For planning staff, is there a specific reason why this doesn't include the port property itself?
I don't know.
In my review of the record, I didn't see anything either. Given that the, how this works is notification to a developer to give the port the opportunity to comment on it, the port would know about activities on their own property. So, in its current form, it wouldn't serve a purpose. That would be my guess, but.
But the way I read it, and I could be wrong, because I'm not a code expert, but it appears that there is potentially an additional level of process that may be involved with review of applications. So, you may require a pre-application meeting that might not other be required, and that's how it reads in the code. And you may make, as I understand it, potentially suggestions or request amendments to the application. Am I getting this wrong?
I don't know that there's necessarily any additional process other than the, let's see here. The city is required to provide notice of permit applications to managers of the port for developments over 10,000 square feet. Then the city shall consider comments provided by the port. And the city must provide the notice to applicants in the overlay with that.
Right. And I think the notice makes sense. I guess it's the, if these projects are being reviewed with higher scrutiny and therefore required to do certain things that other projects may not be required to do, I can see how that might be a value encumbrance. Also, if there is a required, this is a pre-application meeting under EMC Title 15, may be required unless waived by the city. If that's a process that one wouldn't have to go through if they weren't in the PCA, I can also see how that might be a challenge to prosper, to promoting development. So, I'm just, it also makes sense that the notice should apply to developers on port property. Yep.
Thank you.
So, if I might follow on with the staff recommendation, we're talking about further analysis as part of our overall periodic update and environmental review. And by that, I think that we intend to actually look in detail at the code sections, look at the combined map. So, the map that's here in the slide presentation is not the one that's from the code. The map that's in the code, that figure, includes two different geographic areas, one for the port, which is shown here, as well as a separate area for the Navy compatibility area. So, we'll be looking at that. Then there's, in that section of the code with the consolidation under rethink zoning, there's also an airport compatibility zone. And so, those three are addressed all in the same consolidated code section. But we don't have three separate maps, so that might be something, just for ease of use, that we might revisit.
And while we're on the topic of maps and ease of use, one major frustration for the neighbors is that, again, stumbling on this as we did a couple of months ago, in a, you know, small attachment to a handout, all we've seen is a tiny map with some squiggly lines. Nobody really knows who's in or out, or how big it is. I've heard from folks that were involved with the 2018 process, where there apparently was a more robust notice process, that at that point, they had a big wall-sized map up in the train station so that people could go and figure out who was in and who was out and talk about whether the boundaries made sense. But again, since there was no targeted notice that we're aware of, nobody, to this day, could, you know, we don't even know exactly who's covered to try to make notification efforts. So, we would be thrilled if the city would help us out by providing a larger-scale map and helping us identify and provide notice to the folks that are in that area, because this represents a very small portion of the affected residents. And we think there are a lot of people who still have no idea. These are basically my neighbors and their neighbors, and, you know, we're all busy people, so we don't have time to canvas the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I have one quick question. I just want to be clear that the primary impacts that the neighborhood is concerned about are negative impacts to property values as well as reduced leverage on the noise issue, which is an ongoing issue for folks who live in that neighborhood that's adjacent to the port. Okay. And we will open public hearing on this in a moment, but I want to ask you, because I'm particularly concerned about the negative impact of property value, as one's home is typically their primary asset for their family. That's a very serious issue. Do we have examples? This was enacted in 2020. Do we have examples since 2020 where this has negatively impacted property values? I think it would be very important to bring those forward.
I'd have to ask my neighbors. I haven't heard any specific examples, and I would mention three things in connection with that question. Number one, remember, we just found out about this several months ago. It's been a gradual process of, you know, notifying this many people. It's been a gradual process of, you know, notifying this many people. So in terms of coordinating and working with the Realtor and trying to develop solid evidence, we're all busy people. That's not something we've had time to do. Secondly, whatever the effect may have been, it's such a small neighborhood, there aren't very many property sales. Any property sales that occurred a couple of years ago in my mind wouldn't be representative because I think a particular concern is that, we all know that that's why we're here, the zoning, residential zoning area, all of a sudden is in flux and areas that we just counted on to remain single-family residential forever are now all up in the air. So in my opinion, a buyer who might not have thought to look at the zoning and delve any further a year or two ago is going to be in a very different mindset now. And certainly, if I were buying a piece of property, I'd immediately see what was going on with the zoning. If they did that in this case, it would take them directly to that problematic language, and I would probably be very discouraged from buying a property if that's what I saw when I looked at the code. So I, A, we haven't had time, B, the neighborhood is small, and I don't know how many representative houses there would be to give one a good feel for it, and C, the timing has changed so much, even in the past six months, I'm not sure where you would find the right data. I'm, you know, we're talking about gut feelings here, and, you know, I think when it comes to your home prices, you're entitled to have pretty strong personal feelings and concerns about that. And regardless of what Ms. Lefebur thinks, in terms of her personal opinions, I don't think that carries much weight with us.
Well, we don't want to operate on personal opinions. We want to operate on facts, which is why I am particularly interested if any of our community members have examples to share, because 2020 was a couple, you know, three years ago. So that is definitely a time for us to see some impacts. So I would encourage you to bring those things forward. But let's hold for opening of the public hearing so we can bring you forward to speak to those issues. Great. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Chair Chatters, I have another question.
Yes.
Is there a magic surrounding this 10,000-square-foot figure? Is it the reason why it's not eight or 25?
I have not researched that, so I do not know. Does any other staff know?
I do appreciate the planning commission asking those questions. With a lot of these, we don't know, and I have not seen from the record. So I'm left just to guess that it appears to be a very, very round number, and it does appear to be larger than most houses. Not all of them, as we heard at the last planning commission meeting, but so probably to capture, to leave out houses, but capture more significant developments. But that's just a guess.
Sure. And on the topic of property value, I mean, that's a really difficult one because, number one, we don't have 18 Rucker Hills around the city with only one of, or encumbered by the PCA. So it's going to be difficult to find a true comp where you can point to any difference. These are unique homes in a unique neighborhood. So I don't think you're going to find data like that. I think that when I think.
We can try. We can try. Let's open the public hearing and let's try. Let's see what folks have to say.
Hold on. When I think about, when I think about the impact on value, if the review process takes longer or if it results in increased construction costs, to me, that is an effective value.
Thank you.
And I would add to that, it's not just the increased hoops that you have to jump through. And again, you'll hear more about this from other folks. I don't want to take up all the time. But another concern that we have is because this was rushed through with no public input, it appears to be sort of a sloppy, to be blunt, cut-and-paste job. So it has some differences from the airport zone and the Navy zone, and one of the key differences is that it doesn't have exemptions for pre-existing uses and, you know, remodeling. It sort of leaves that all up in the air, and we've heard from the port and the city, I believe, too, that the intent was to capture only developments, new developments, over that 10,000-foot trigger. But if you look at subsection B of the applicable code, which I don't have right in front of me, it's not drafted that way. It's drafted very broadly, and you could make, a lawyer could make an argument that there's an interpretation that supports the limitation to 10,000 feet. But if you look at, if you're a casual buyer trying to figure out what is this port compatibility zone I might be buying into, and you look at subsection B, what you see is a very broad, unclear provision that suggests, well, if I want to build an addition onto my house, do I have to jump through some hoops? And what are they? And maybe it's time to move on to the next house. Again, had we gotten notice, had we had input, we could have called that out and clarified it, but just the confusion and the imprecise drafting is another concern that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We didn't have additional questions for Ms. Hall before we let her return to her seat? No? Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, if you would take the role when you're ready.
Commissioner Lart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you. Folks, if anyone would like to speak to this matter, we are open for public hearing. Please state your name and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Brendecker, 412 Laurel Drive. Kristen Hall was excellent in kind of giving the overview, and I know a lot of, numerous of us neighbors are going to come up here and kind of flesh out a little bit more of what she has said. And I just wanted to start by talking about the lack of notice and the misleading material. It's inexplicable to us that despite the strong number of objections to the 2018 proposal to create a port compatibility zone, a modified but very similar proposal was reintroduced in 2020 with no meaningful public notice. Even worse, the material prepared for the public in connection with these two neighborhood meetings intended to describe the rethink zoning of which the provisions were a part, were misleading. For example, in connection with the February of 2020 Port Gardner Neighborhood Associating Meeting, the materials obtained from our public records request described the primary purpose of the proposed zoning changes to be, A, simplify the code, and B, to increase access to affordable housing. Attendees were informed that, quote, "most areas will maintain zoning designation very similar to current zoning." The handout described 10 zoning types with no reference to a compatibility, a port compatibility zone. Then this is the most, single most important zoning change for residents in the Rucker Hill area. Similarly, the North Everett Public Forum, conducted by the city in June of 2020 to discuss the rethink zoning process, the proposed changes were characterized in the application handout as, quote, "updating and modernizing the code," with specific goals which included reducing duplication, improving organization, and providing better access to information. The handout then showed the existing zoning map, followed by the proposed new zoning map, including significant detail regarding the proposed changes with absolutely no reference to the PCA. Because of the lack of notice and misleading material, I would like to ask that the commissioners will recommend forwarding Kristen Hall's amendment to the PCA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Melinda Bargreen. My husband, Howie, and I live directly adjacent to the port, just uphill to the south of the port. And to speak just briefly to a matter that was discussed a few moments ago, yes, our property value has gone down. It's very clear. And we own a substantial amount of property in the area, and the value has diminished. And it has diminished since the arrival of the port compatibility area, at a time when you would certainly expect property values to be rising in an area that would be otherwise very desirable, views of the water, surrounded by trees, beautiful environment, which unfortunately is not a beautiful sonic environment. Given the lack of meaningful public notice, it is not surprising in the least that a handful of residents are confused about aspects of the 2020 amendments, as noted in the port's recent submittal. None of this confusion affects the core issues identified in our application, including, A, the lack of meaningful notice provided to residents regarding the proposed code changes in 2020, B, the effect of the code changes on property values, and C, the effect of the code changes on the ability of the neighborhood to persuade the port to take all commercially reasonable steps to mitigate noise and other impacts. This is but one of the many reasons why I am asking the planning commission to forward the port area residents' proposed amendment to the port compatibility area regulation to the city council for consideration. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bargreen, quick question before you step away. I'm sorry. Can you tell me, can you tell me how you know your property value has gone down? To that, I will have my husband speak.
County assessment.
County assessment. Thank you. That's pretty cut and dried. Thank you. Anything else? All right.
Point of clarification, is it the most recent county assessment?
Sure.
Yes, it is. Alternatively, part property that we own that is farther away from the port compatibility area was not affected. I think this is pretty clear. We don't have anyone here who can speak to the latest assessment cycle, I don't think. That's.
I actually can.
Okay. Would you like to do that? Would you like to hold?
I can hold, yeah, but I can.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Paul Kulis. I live at 515 Laurel Drive. My family and I have lived in our home for almost 30 years. I'd like to speak a little bit more on how the PCA, PCA can affect property values. Item five of the comments submitted by the port on July 14 argued that the concerns of the citizens regarding their property values, quote, "appear to be referring to their personal opinions or anecdotal conversations with a real estate professional," unquote, and notes that no real estate evaluations or comparisons over time were presented to support the concerns. However, the port CEO in an email to the neighborhood stated that the port compatibility area, quote, "doesn't affect," unquote, "home value," and what appeared to be her personal opinion in that case was not supported with any evidence, and she suggested it was missing respect to our personal opinions. It shouldn't be surprising that the residents have a strong personal opinion such matters, especially when they have such significant effect on the net worth of their households, as the chair had mentioned. It should also be not surprising that we're not willing to accept the port CEO's personal opinions on such matter in lieu of their own. Fortunately, in a more recent submittal, the port has now modified the statement to acknowledge that the existence of the PCA may in fact decrease the real estate value of the affected residents' homes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Bitters, 605 33rd Street. I thought I'd mentioned that I was defeated by technology last time, too. I tried to participate remotely, I couldn't get recognized. And then when I did, there was a horrible echo, so I don't know if anyone understood me. I'm going to make a few brief comments on my own, and then I'd like to read a response from Kristen Hall into the record. I'm pleased that the staff has recommended this go to city council. I'm looking forward to speaking in favor of the amendment there again. As far as property values, yeah, I noticed a drop in the assessment that I got from the county. Maybe that was coincidental, maybe not, I don't know. Anyway, now I'm going to read Kristen's response to the port's July 14th submittal. Honorable planning commissioners, this response to the port's July 14th submittal is provided on behalf of PAR, Port Area Residents, and Kristen Hall. The port largely makes our case for the amendment we propose. Purpose of the PCA, in the second paragraph, the port confirms that the sole purpose of the port compatibility area is to ensure that future large development projects in the city in the vicinity of the port are aware of possible implications of living or working near an international seaport and working waterfront. The amendment proposed by PAR accomplishes that goal in a more narrowly tailored way than the current PCA map and regulations without the collateral consequences for the existing adjacent residential neighborhood. The port does not address PAR's application or proposal. Rather than address PAR's initial application or our June 29th proposal amendment, the port's letter focuses on a small number of misperceptions by a handful of residents and implies that the neighborhood's entire position is based on misinformation. It is understandable, given the lack of meaningful public participation, that a few neighbors may not have fully understood all the issues. More importantly, PAR's application does not include or rely on any of those misperceptions. Diminuation of property value. The port's submittal to the planning commission at the June 20 meeting stated that the PCA will not affect property values. The port's July 14th submittal now acknowledges that it may diminish property values, but instead of providing expert opinion, it simply dismisses PAR's evidences anecdotal. Repealing the PCA will make this question moot. Noise. The planning commission is not aware that port-generated noise is significantly affecting the health and quality of life of nearby residents. The port's July 14th submittal includes many statements about the port's willingness to work with neighbors on the noise issue, but it also includes a 2016 letter from the port's lawyer asking for the city's acquiescence to a strained interpretation of the city's noise ordinance that the port noise is exempt. You will note that the port does not provide any confirmation from the city supporting the port lawyer's interpretation. The port's continued reliance on that self-serving interpretation is not encouraging. We hope that the port's representation in its July 14th submittal more accurately reflects its commitment to work with neighbors to implement commercially reasonable measures to mitigate port noise. It is self-evident that it is more likely to honor that commitment if the PCA is repealed and replaced with PAR's proposed amendment. Notice. Much of the neighborhood's consternation results from the wholly inadequate public notice for the adaptation of the PCA as part of rethink zoning in 2020. As explained in PAR's application, not only was the notice insufficient to apprise the neighborhood of this significant zoning change, especially given the neighborhood's placiffrous opposition to the same proposal in 2018, but the city's public outreach was misleading. Whether a technical argument that notice was legally sufficient can now be constructed is irrelevant for present purposes. Notice clearly did not meet the standard that Everett's residents expect and deserve, as evidenced by the public outrage the commission is now aware of. Please note, we do not mean to imply that the insufficient and misleading notice was intentional or resulted from a lack of integrity by the planning department. As the planning director acknowledged in our application meeting, while notice may have been legally sufficient, it should have been better. The port's only response to the neighbor's concern about notice is essentially not our problem. That was the city's job. We agree, and we commend the department for now recommending that PAR's proposal be forwarded to consideration as a way to rectify that mistake. In summary, PAR's proposed amendment avoids unnecessary collateral damage to port area residents while accomplishing the port's stated goal of notifying developers of large multifamily developments. Thank you for considering our proposal, Port Area Residents, Kristen Hall.
Thank you. Do we have additional community members who would like to speak to this?
Hi, my name's Corey Goulet, and I'm at 606 33rd Street. So there's two, thank you first, you know, for allowing us to speak today. I'd like to address two key points in this regard with the property values and with the noise mitigation. So I'm here to provide comments and some of my observations with regard to the port compatibility overlay from an impacted resident's perspective, since I was not originally asked to in 2018 or 2020. So sometime in 2020, this was adopted. The adoption of this coding will have unintended negative consequences on local residents. The mapping will reduce our buyer base and be detrimental to our property values. I think we've expressed that. As it stands now, anyone could simply. As it stands now, anyone could simply do a code search and find this information and potentially be put off that the property itself is within the port compatibility area. Another consideration, we'll have to determine what is a resident's responsibility when selling a home? Would we be required, or should we be ethically bound to disclose the mapping information? And any port impacts, prospective buyers could be put off, or seller may have to reduce their home-selling base based on the mapping environment. These are unknown and not tested, but very important consequences, consequences that should be considered. Another point I'd like to make, this is one more way the surrounding residents have to accept consequences from the port activities. The mapping is another tool to prevent residents from complaining about any issues of health impacts, air, light, noise, pollution, or concerns over the visual impacts of port equipment now and in the future, and future port development. This adds a momentum to the port's control over the city and negates the port's responsibilities to collaborate with the surrounding residents on port modernization, which could improve its noise, light, and land pollutants, as well as our residents' quality of life. We understand the port is a component of the regional economies. We are not asking the port to go away, but to be good citizens and respectful of Everett's citizens, who are impacted by this, and to those residents who don't even know of the port compatibility mapping. In my observation over the years and living in the Port Gardner neighborhood, the port has little regard for the neighborhood's health and safety along its borders and other surrounding neighborhoods impacted by the port corridor, and to date have done nothing that I'm aware to mitigate pollutions or work with the residents who live around the port's borders. There is no economic benefit to the port to include our residential homes in the PCA. We offer as an alternative, the port could potentially inform those multifamily developers.
Please try to conclude your comments. Thank you.
Okay, let me just summarize, there's no need to include our residents in the PCA, and I appreciate the opportunity to be heard today, and I ask the Planning Commission to adopt the recommendation put forward to remove all references to port compatibility area, including removal of the port compatibility area map 17.2. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is David Mascrenes. I live in 517 Laurel Drive. I'd like to associate all my comments to the Kristen Hall application. I think it's the finest thing I've read lately. I've read it seven or eight times, I like it more and more each time I read it. So I hope you've all read it at least once. It's good. Now, I'd like you to call your attention to Appendix A, the very next page, where she's description of the request, she spells it out, remove all references from port compatibility area, she spelled it out, so, you know, I'd thank her for that. You get into, she was also asked, and she sent a letter on June 29th to Kathy Davis, making a suggestion again, second page, if you get into application, she instructs everybody, and it makes a lot of sense on how this whole thing can be settled. So you should have gotten that, so I'm adding that on there. And then, the planning's recommendation to the staff today, the staff is making the recommendation, planning staff recommends the Planning Commission forward recommendations to City Council to advise, request for further analysis, consider, we're asked that you do that. It's a simple, straightforward request, she's got everything covered, you've heard enough settlements from the neighbors, and so, one of the last things I'd like you to, on that map you're looking at, you gotta be Superman, Superwoman. So if you look at a bigger map, it appears that the small group of neighbors who are here have found out about this and they are upset about it, but it appears there's gonna be something like, if you forward this, and I hope you forward this to the City Council, it's gonna be something like about 200 or 250 other homes in that district when you look at a larger map. So that was something else I think has been overlooked, and so, I hope you would consider that too, and just follow the recommendation. Now, on a personal note, for me, I live in the McGee House. That house was built in 1910, which means my house has got ten years seniority over the port. They didn't come along till 1918. Now, I got a certificate here, says historical preservation. Most of us have one of these certificates. If you don't know this, and you probably do, it's very hard to maintain a historical house. You really gotta do some interesting things. Now, you wanna come by my house in this winter, I got single-pane windows, and if, look in my windows, you're gonna see, you know, you're gonna see frost, because I can't afford to, I can't replace those windows, it's a historical house. Now, if you also, if you guys take a look at the Currs, who owned the Rucker Mansion, those people have had to put in at least $100,000 restoring that thing, and thousands of man-hours. Every time you go in there, they're working on it, but it's for the benefit of the whole city, the county, the state, everybody knows about the Rucker Mansion, everyone, and so we really should, how do we protect those? So when we got this notice, I thought I was safe in a historical house.
Please try to bring your comments to a close.
I'm done. I just thought I was safe, so when I found out about this, whoa, what's going on here? So you're right, when the chair's asking, we gotta do more research, we gotta do everything, but right now, we need you to help us out, and for this to City Council, it could buy us all some time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the aforementioned Bob Kerr at 412 Laurel Drive. Thank you for the opportunity for public hearing, and I'm here to voice my objection to the port incompatibility zone. I, including my neighbors, love our neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. It seems that the PCA represents two conflicting interests, but we believe that there is common ground, and we'll hope you, we hope that you will help us achieve that common ground. The port of Everett is concerned with commerce, period. The historic Rucker Hill neighborhood is concerned with property rights, health, safety, environmental pollution, and property values. Regarding the effect of the PCA on property values, the port will say there is no adverse effect on property values, and no impact on residential property. They have said that, and they'll say it again. However, subsection B of Code Section 19.7, what, excuse me, 19.17.110 reads as follows, and I quote, "This subsection establishes notification and disclosure requirements for any development, activity, or uses within a port compatibility area subject to the requirements of this section. Any uses, any property." This subsection goes on to further describe the notice requirements, mention numerous negative impacts of living near the port, but it does not specifically reference the 10,000-square-foot trigger mentioned in subsection A. The port has indicated that all the PCA-related notice requirements are intended to apply only to such larger new developments, but they appear to be far from clear in subsection B. Especially to the casual reader who may be trying to evaluate the effect of the PAC on a potential home purchase. In addition, the port version of the PAC on a, excuse me.
Please try to bring your comments to conclusion when you can.
Thank you. I'll certainly do that. I just have one, two more sentences here. Unlike, let's see, in addition to the port version of the PAC provision, unlike the airport compatibility area provision located elsewhere in the same chapter, it does not specifically exempt minor exterior alterations, pre-existing uses, leading to even more confusion, and I might add, a clear contradiction to what the port is saying.
Thank you.
This is just one of the reasons that I'm asking the Planning Commission to forward the proposed amendment. I think there's middle ground here that can be, that will address both parties' concerns. Just one final footnote, there is a property on Rucker Hill that's over 10,000 square feet, so it's a little capricious to pick a number of 10,000. I would also request from the city that you not wait till December of 2024 to address this issue. I think it would be easy to bring it to the City Council almost immediately, and that's what our requests from your neighbors are.
Mr. Kerr, quick question for you. What is the square footage of the property that is over 10,000 square feet?
Well, it depends on the appraiser that you talk to. It's anywhere from 13,200, 13,200 to just over 10,000.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Clark. My wife and I live at 500 Laurel Drive. I have some prepared comments. I also have a couple personal comments and a closing. We recognize that the PCA-related code provisions do not explicitly limit or eliminate the rights of the residents to complain about the port noise, or to request that the port implement all commercially reasonable noise mitigation measures. However, it seems obvious that the port's ability to point to the language in the Everett Municipal Code that alerts residents or potential residents that they may be exposed to, quote, "inconveniences or discomforts," including but not limited to noise, odors, glare, fumes, dust, construction, activities, smoke, traffic, hours of operation, low overhead flights, and other maritime activities, gives the port significant leverage that it did not previously have in arguing that residents have assumed these risks of these impacts, and no corresponding obligation for the port to take all the commercially reasonable steps to mitigate such impacts. Excuse me. Personal comment, we are very comfortable living at the port. Ruth and I have been there for eight years. We enjoy everything the port does. We have attended the port meetings and been part of the decision-making process. One of the issues that we personally have not heard discussed in detail is that this situation sets up for a more adversarial relationship with the port, and we don't want to do that. These both are two of many reasons why I'm asking the Planning Commission to forward the port area residents' proposed amendment of the port compatibility area regulations to the City Council for considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional comments from community members in the gallery? Kathy, do we have anyone online who'd like to speak to this issue?
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. My name is Doug Everly, and I live at 3407 Snohomish Avenue. I presume that I'm located within the port compatibility overlay, but quite honestly, from the map that I received, I can't see who is included in this particular area. I have, I'm speaking here to the Planning Commission to forward the port area residents' proposed amendment of the port compatibility area regulations directly to the City Council for their consideration. The main flaw we see within the, within respect to the PCA regulations is that they appear to include and emphasize that our neighborhood is an existing one. Rather than pointing out to future contractors that we are a neighborhood that is of historic significance, and we believe we deserve a special notice from the board of impacts that future construction may have. The compatibility, excuse me, the proposed amendments imply that the port compatibility is a one-way street. The port has no responsibility to minimize its impacts on existing residences, except in consideration of those who are building a construction of 10,000 square feet. Its impacts on existing residents, some of which were, residences were constructed before the port was ever in existence, came into existence. It is inconsistent with numerous provisions of the comprehensive plan as outlined in our application. It seems clear that whatever the cause, the public engagement process here was botched, and the neighborhoods were deprived of 2020 of any opportunity to explain their concern. The process which we recommend presents an ideal opportunity to rectify this error. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Everly. Do we have additional folks from the community who would like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners, Laura Gurley, Port Staff. Thank you, everyone, for opening up this hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Right off the bat, it's obvious that we're hearing that there is a lot of, a need for clarification of what the PCA is. We offer, at this point, to work with the city and the neighbors to tweak the language of the PCA, rather than it going away. That might be a compromise to meet everybody's goals. We do still stand by the letter and the information that we put in on the 14th, that most of what the concerns have been voiced regarding noise and property values won't be solved or resolved by elimination of the PCA. The purpose of it, and to answer your question, Commissioner Finch, you had asked, what was the reason for the 10,000 square feet? Going back in my head, conversations, it was a kind of a square footage threshold that we talked through with city staff. What would be a typical multifamily size, where you go from being single-family residence into multifamily or something larger, because the intention was never to impact single-family homes? So I think that that language could be clarified in the PCA to make it clearer. Adding ourselves into the PCA, we could do that, we have no reason not to. I mean, we know what we're developing on our property, so it's, you know, doesn't matter to us. I also want to add, and again, this is in our letter, that it is consistent under Chapter 11 of the comprehensive plan with the city, as well as the RCW that allowed Chapter 11 to occur, and in the comprehensive plan, Chapter 11, we specifically call out that noise issues will continue. It only affects new building construction, things that when we're talking about a transition area, which is what this compatibility area is, would be required in new building construction. The analysis would be based upon noise levels permitted on port property, or on port PCA by the city's noise regulations. We have to abide by those, you know, whether you're in or out of the PCA. If there are actual complaints that we can work through, elimination of the PCA... If there are actual complaints that we can work through, elimination of the PCA does not accomplish anything regarding us hearing noise complaints. And we hear you. We hear you loud and clear, and we want to work with you on that. In our letter, we have suggested meeting with the residents and the city as a cooperative effort, so that city staff is there to help interpret what, how code would be written and read, especially regarding your noise ordinances, so that everyone can be satisfied that we are listening. We definitely do still have some misgivings about the question of property values. The reason why we put in our letter, undetermined, because nobody has proven it either way. You know, my property, I live in Lake Stevens, my property values have gone down because of the way the economy is. You know, things went crazy for a little while. So whether or not the devaluation of certain properties today is directly correlated to the PCA, who's to say? We haven't paid an expert to look at that, so that's why we didn't directly dispute that. So in short, I think our message is the desired outcome regarding property values and noise and other issues, such as, I think emissions was one of the things that we've heard quite a bit about, eliminating the PCA does not resolve those at all. By having the PCA on a map, it actually tells city staff when a project application comes in for something bigger than 10,000 square feet. If it's within that area, then they have to get the port involved and give us the opportunity to work with the applicant. That's why it's on a map. If you put the language as suggested by, I apologize, I don't remember who suggested it, in a footnote?
That was Ms. Hall, in conjunction with 43 other neighbors.
If you put it in a footnote, it's less visible to someone. And I think what we're trying to do is full disclosure here, that you're next to a port. That's not going to change, PCA or not. You're going to have port impacts.
I would hope that our planning staff is not just looking at pictures when they're reviewing applications. I mean, I hope that they're actually reading the code, not just looking at maps. If it's not intended to apply to single-family residences, and there's a significant portion of the port compatibility area that's in an R1 zone, why is it in the zone?
I would say that because anything can change in the future. Zoning changes happen. That would be my best guess.
Help me out, what's the benefit of the port compatibility area?
Basically so that when an applicant comes in, say, for instance, there is a property that several years ago, it overlooks the terminal. We got wind through our real estate contacts that a, an assisted living facility was going to be built right overlooking the port terminal. If that had moved forward, which I, I don't know why it didn't, but we would have been notified so that we could talk to the applicant and be like, you're overlooking the port. Maybe you want to consider, when you build this thing, putting in beefier windows. You know, just, we know that there's noise, so that's the purpose.
And just so I'm clear, this is advisory.
We admit there's noise. We have no problem with that.
Just so I'm clear, so that you're providing feedback, which is advisory in nature.
Correct.
And so the applicant wouldn't be required to make any improvements as a result of your comments?
We would provide feedback, and as it's written, then staff has the ability to consider that feedback, and they determine whether or not it would be a requirement.
I see, yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Gurley. I'd like to pause for a second, and Commissioner Lark, you happen to have some specific knowledge around this cycle of property valuation that the county just sent out to residents. If you would just give us a little bit of information on that, that'd be appreciated.
Yes, I can definitely give you information. I want to just cite the press release put out by the assessor. So over across the county, there was, due to the cooling in the housing market, there, cited by the assessor, there was a decrease overall of about 6.6% for, averaging countywide for residential housing. So as we assess and think about what the impact property is, we just say that this, we can't take one data point, we need to take the span of data points, because this one explicitly states the reason why the assessor put this new evaluation out. So as we're assessing this part, you know, we can't just look at one data point. I just want to put that out there for consideration. Over.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening. My name is Clarence Corcoran, and I live at 3407 Snohomish Avenue. My biggest concern with CPA overlay is that when I moved in the neighborhood 15 years, 15 years ago, it wasn't what I bought into. And I don't know how long I'll stay in the neighborhood, but I have a historical home, and I know ethically, when I sell, I don't feel like I could hide that. And I know that would cause, would cause a problem to the sale. In the neighborhood, our homes are historical, and you're looking for a specialized, a specific buyer, and you're looking for a buyer that can afford it. Those homes run from, anywhere from starting from $1 million, maybe less in some areas, up to $4 million. And the specialized buyer, you have an ethical responsibility to tell them about this. And I don't know why we're being forced to be put in this zone. It's concerning that way. And in regards to, you know, that we would make some changes to our home. My windows are paper-thin, and I'm good with that. You can actually see the ripple of them, and I have no plans in adding a triple-pane window to them. It would just destroy the historical value of the home, and I can't even imagine doing that. In regards to the notification, you know, this issue was brought up in 2018, and then voted without our notice in 2020, as we've already discussed. And I feel like, you know, here we are now, and there's a way to correct it. We've offered a very good solution with a very nice language that would leave it out of this map overlay, and there's no ethical questions on our side. And, you know, one of the things about the city is I love getting those indications of what the city's doing to the ports in the city. And this is what I live for in this city. I love the city, and I love what's going on here, and I really am very excited about what's going on. And I want to keep this communication going, and I don't want this to be a problem. I think that our solution is a good one, and I don't know what it's going to apply for my property value, and I don't have any feel for that. But I do feel a very strong ethical that how am I going to sell my house someday if I sell? And how am I going to commit this to them? And why am I in an industrial zone that I have to place it out there? And putting it in a footnote where I'm not required to disclose that gives me the ease that I can, I can sell this home for what it is, a historical, beautiful home. And that's what I, when we bought into the home, that's what we were proposing, and I'd like to keep it that way. And those are my personal concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional community members who'd like to speak on this issue? Kathy, do we have anyone online who'd like to speak to this item?
I've been told that our tech issue is fixed.
Great.
So Mr. Koenig, if you have any comments on this item, if you could let me know. And possibly, if you could unmute, and if you don't want to testify, just say, "No comment," so we can make sure that our tech problem has been fixed.
No comment.
We have words from online. Wonderful.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes, and thank you to the public for being here.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you all for coming. This is such a critical part of ensuring that your government is serving your needs to show up and communicate, so thank you all for being here.
Commissioners, do you have additional questions on this item before we move on to the next? Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for staff, and also a comment, and I'll just voice them all now, and if you can answer the questions, I invite you to do so. The first question is, and I was here on the commission in 2018 and 2020, but I must confess that I'm a little bit foggy in my memory of the discussion of this item during those time periods. So the first question is, is the creation of this overlay in some way directed by state law? Because I know there was state law regarding airports, but I don't recall myself whether it applies to ports.
So I did do, so Karen Stewart on staff. So the little research that I have done so far is to look at the Commerce Department checklist that we have submitted as one of our deliverables last month. And in there, there's reference to two RCWs. One is for airport compatibility areas, and also one for military installations, like Naval Station Everett. There's also a RCW. I did not see a reference to one for a port.
Okay, thank you. The other, the other question is, one of our, one of the people who got up and testified was encouraging an accelerated schedule for this, rather than waiting until the final conclusion of the update to the comp plan. And I'm wondering if there is a legal obstacle to doing that, or if some acceleration could be considered in this case. I believe that this, these issues, not all of them, not all the noise issues probably, but some of the issues regarding the PCA can be resolved fairly quickly. I have that feeling in my mind. So if there is a way to accelerate it, I would, I would support that. And the last, this is a comment now, is since there's not a directive in state law about this, maybe there aren't other similar situations around the region, but I would be curious to know what other ports around the region are doing on the subject of adjacency.
Again, Laura Gurley, Port Staff. RCW 3670A.085, which was in, is an attachment to our letter, is, regards comprehensive plans and specifically port elements. It was enacted in 20, sorry, 2009, and basically, any marine port that has revenues of over $60 million a year, which only applies to Port of Seattle, Northwest Seaport Alliance, and Tacoma, is required to have this element in their comprehensive plan with their local jurisdiction. If you are a port that has over $20 million in revenue, which is Port of Everett, and I think Bellingham and Vancouver, maybe, it's optional. So we had worked with the city back in 2009 to establish a marine port element, which is now Chapter 11, in the city's comprehensive plan. In the RCW, it specifically calls out, "In developing port elements under subsections 1 and 2 of this section, a city may utilize one or more of the following approaches. A, creation of a port overlay district that protects container port uses." That's also been translated into Chapter 11 of the comprehensive plan, specifically identifying these kinds of tools to protect the interests of an operating port, if that helps.
Did I follow up?
Please.
A little bit there. So as Laura mentioned, the port compatibility, no, the marine port element is an optional element for the Port of Everett. Once initiated, there are, there's the overlay option. There is also a requirement that the element establish policies and programs that define and protect the core areas of the port and port-related industrial uses within the city, and if you, and identify and resolve key land use conflicts along the edge of the core area, and minimize and mitigate to the extent practicable incompatible uses along the edge of the core area. Multiple different ways to accomplish that, so I would say is a simple answer. It's not required that there be an overlay, but it is required once a marine port element is initiated, that the compatibility of the port and surrounded uses and vice versa be addressed in some way. The policy that is in the marine core, the marine port element, is land use impact protection overlay area. Collaborate with the Port of Everett to designate a land use impact protection overlay area for all non-industrial designated land within a to-be-determined distance of the marine core area external boundaries. This policy is intended to reduce the potential for land use conflicts between port-related uses and surrounding non-industrial uses by requiring additional noise and development reviews and inclusion of any needed adverse impact protection measures for all new uses and construction within the designated overlay area. I bring that up because, to get to your question of timing. Ideally, the policies that call for an overlay would be implemented in the regulations by what is called for in the policy. Again, there's different ways that you could accomplish this, but at least that policy in the marine port element seems to speak to an overlay of some sort. Again, lots of different ways that you could address it specifically. Ideally, if we change the overlay or remove the overlay completely, you should probably change that policy. That policy being part of the comprehensive plan would naturally be part with the periodic update. Other than that, for a development regulation alone, yes, that can be initiated separately, and that can be done at any time. Comprehensive plans are more limited in the timing and the schedule of those amendments. I think that's it for some context, so with, as with everything, it's not simple, but I would say there are changes that we could make immediately. Capacity and, and all that would be an issue, but legally, we would be able to do it. However, consistency with the policy may be an issue.
Commissioner Ballard, I saw that you had, no? Okay, Commissioner Finch?
Just to reiterate Commissioner Zalinski's comments, it does seem like the language that currently exists is somewhat of a departure from the intent of the overlay. And I do appreciate that Ms. Hall proposed an amendment to the language that is specific. And so, given that what I heard tonight was that it was never intended to apply to existing structures or single-family residential, it seems like there may be some sort of flexibility in the 10,000-square-foot marker, especially given that building forms have changed, even in the last, you know, couple of years. It would seem that this could be taken out of step with the overall longer-term docketing process. And from what I heard from the port tonight, it doesn't seem like they would be in opposition of amending the language so long as the overlay stayed in place to some extent that was applicable to what their intent was. Is that fair?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Finch, that is what I was hearing. I am very encouraged by Ms. Gurley stating the willingness of the port to correct some of the language that is murky, that is causing some very valid concerns amongst the neighbors. So how can we ensure that that process happens, that that collaboration occurs, so this, this can be corrected and the language can be clarified in as timely a manner as possible?
I would recommend the language on the screen, keeping this application alive, which would remove the overlay entirely. That ensures that this stays on the table during the periodic update. We will, on the side of that, initiate conversations, not initiate, we're already having conversations with the port, and if Ms. Hall can continue to kind of represent the port neighbor group, that would be an initial starting point, and see if there's something that we can arrive at along the lines of the suggestion alternate method that would be done. So we can take that work on, and my hope throughout this has been that we don't get to the very end of a decision, and that we're able to come to some sort of agreement before that. But some workshopping to the language of that reference note would need to happen, conversations with the port, conversations with my boss and others would need to happen as well. So we will take that on. But my recommendation for this meeting and for this motion would be to just continue with this docket item and use that, consider it as a backstop.
Okay. Additional questions? Okay, additional questions? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
Okay, the next item is a site-specific actual request to rezone property that is subject to comprehensive plan. Land use designation change would need to happen in order to allow the increase in zoning. So the requested outcome of the-
Thank you for attending. We appreciate your presence this evening.
This was my concern?
Yes.
This was my specific concern?
Yes, it was. I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, so the applicant representing the property owner is seeking a requested outcome for 1802 McDougal Avenue to allow mid-rise housing development. And the staff comments are that this proposed amendment is for a property that is in the urban corridor frame geography that we're developing as part of the comp plan update and will be considered for low-rise development up to four floors in Alternative 3 and mid-rise development in Alternative 2. So our staff recommendation is to determine that this requested outcome from this applicant is already incorporated in our periodic update environmental review and would be addressed under Alternative 2.
Question on that, so I mean, we've talked about combining them, right? Or in the end, very, is it, if we only recommend two, how will that work out if it's into a blended one? Some of them, you've recommended two and three, so I feel like those are covered. But if you're only studying it for two and we do a combination, is that, are you anticipating that?
So our intention is to do a robust analysis in environmental impact statement, which establishes the bookends. So as long as it's included somewhere within the spectrum, then at decision points, we would have already met the requirements of conducting the environmental review. So it's acknowledged that there's a lot of fluidity just because of our comp planning process. But as long as it's included in one of the alternatives, and certainly staff will be paying attention to these docket requests and looking at, well, wait, what's happening with 1802 McDougal, for example, that we'll be addressing that. And if we forget, and you're curious, you can ask us. So those are our staff comments.
Thank you. The applicant, Brian Mies, are you present this evening?
Actually, the applicant with this particular one is Jan Haramda. And I did speak with him over the phone today, and I don't believe he's in attendance tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing on this item?
So moved, I've reclaimed my mantle.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy, when you're ready.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody here who'd like to speak to this matter? Kathy, do we have anyone online who would like to speak to this issue?
Mr. Koenig, would you like to speak on this item?
No comment.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this issue?
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have questions on this item? Okay, before we move on, I just want to circle back.
Really quick, I just want to make sure I understood the question that Commissioner Ballard was asking. So we are looking, we're looking at this in a conditional basis then, if I understand correctly?
We're making sure that this particular requested amendment will be included in the environmental impact statement that we're preparing. And with that, there's the in-depth analysis for all the different elements of the environment. So we'll be looking at rezoning, upzoning essentially this area.
Okay, I understand it. Thank you.
Before we move on, I want to circle back to the item where the technology wasn't working, the EHA item. Do we have anyone online who wants to speak to that issue? Because we can reopen the public hearing so they can speak to the matter.
Mr. Koenig, did you want to provide comments on the Everett Housing Authority project?
I just want to comment on-
Okay, pause for just a moment.
My specific amendment.
Okay, so not that, not that one?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The next one.
Thank you.
Okay, then I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, the next proposed amendment application is from Mr. Koenig. And it is concerning different aspects of the middle housing topic, which I'm assuming the commission has been getting briefed on. So there's a number of slides here that are bulleted, trying to summarize Mr. Koenig's requests, requested amendments. So in general, they're related to code changes as well as comprehensive plan policy changes. And this first slide talks about design standards for middle housing and talks about the need to clearly address density compatibility. So as our existing single-family neighborhoods are infilled with something that's more like middle housing, trying to have some standards, making sure, design standards, and making sure that staff is able to apply those design standards is the request. And then evaluate the effectiveness of those. Then also requested regulatory changes. So adopting the definition, the state definition of middle housing and then protecting environmentally sensitive areas, which we do through our critical area regulations. And then also proposed amendment to ensure adequate infrastructure because of the increased density. And then requesting that middle housing not be permitted in certain instances where there would not be the public right-of-way design and construction standards are currently not in existence. That could be specific to sidewalks, for example. And then the last bulleted item there is that in existing R1 and RS single-family zones, keep the maximum building height to two stories or 28 feet. So staff comments on this, these proposed amendments. So based on our initial review, the proposed comprehensive plan policies are likely consistent with our criteria in the code. State law, multi-county planning policies from Vision 2050, as well as the county-wide planning policies. Two of the requested development regulation changes related to the middle housing definition and the requested height limit will likely be consistent with criterias in Chapter 1503 Everett Municipal Code as well as the comprehensive plan. The other two requested amendments related to what the applicant calls environmentally sensitive areas were interpreted as critical areas and the rights-of-waste standards. Staff initially is determining that they would likely not be consistent. So staff's recommendation at this point is to advance the requested comprehensive plan policies for further analysis and consideration and include the entire application with the supporting materials and regulatory provisions as comments to be considered as part of our comprehensive plan periodic update process. So those are staff comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Koenig is present and would like to speak to his application?
Mr. Koenig?
With middle housing now a requirement to be allowed in single-family areas, it is important that the city address the definition, which means buildings are compatible in scale, form, and character. The person who developed the concept of middle housing, are you getting feedback?
Sounds great.
Yeah, okay. The person who developed the concept of middle housing is Daniel Perelax, and his book is entitled, "Missing Middle Housing: Thinking Big and Building Small to Respond to Today's Housing Crisis." He is an architect, developed the concept, and gives advice on the design of middle housing so it is built to the scale, form, and character with existing single houses. Mr. Perelax, standard is two to two and a half stories for middle housing built in single-family neighborhoods. It's important to address the standard and include it as a proposal option. When I met with staff, they did give me the option of an application versus a comment. I think the proposals I have for regulations should be part of an application so that the public understands what is thought of by the experts who developed the middle housing concept rather than being something that is a comment that doesn't get public notice and public review. You saw today citizens on Rucker Hill concerned about adequate notice and clarity. I believe it's important because middle housing with up to six units in the single-family areas, I think people need to know the options and also what the experts who developed the concept of middle housing thought of in the sense of the scale, the form, and character of that, which is part of the definition by state law for middle housing. So I encourage you to include both the development regulations and the comprehensive plan policies that I proposed onto City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Do commissioners have specific questions for Mr. Koenig? Okay, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing on this matter?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy, when you're ready.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here who'd like to speak on this issue? Other than Mr. Koenig, do we have anyone online who would like to speak to this issue?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a question for staff. I guess I'm trying to picture how you, how this would be entered in. I mean, I'm using this as a draft for code section on what we need to do. I mean, I'm questioning 28-foot height. I've also read this book, I've also attended personally and an online seminars by the author. And he's an expert and I like him, but it's certainly one option, right? He also uses, you know, 28 feet, I don't, I couldn't find anywhere where he said that's a limit. He uses examples up to three feet, or three stories. I think the book talks two and a half, I think it says two here. So I think this is dangerous and I would not support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Ballard. Additional comments before we close the public hearing?
I agree with Commissioner Ballard. We did a lot of really good work making housing easier. I remember one of the biggest conflict, when I worked at Housing Hope, we were trying to get height for the project over in Port Gardner neighborhood. And the biggest challenge we had was getting just that extra third story and made it pencil. And, you know, this 28 feet doesn't make it pencil. And I feel like it's, you know, we've taken three steps forward and now we're going to take two steps back.
Go ahead, Commissioner Atkins.
So a question for staff, I guess. So right now, are there design standards for single-family homes?
Thinking, thinking, definition of design standards. I think there are, there must be some that would be considered design standards.
There are for those homes within a historic overlay zone. So, and we have three of those areas.
Yeah, I take that back, maybe, it's a tough question.
We have had this conversation about design standards around single-family homes compared to ADUs. And I thought we had established that there were not specific design standards around single-family homes.
There are not significant ones. It'd be tough to say there's none at all, again, without defining a design standard. Is that just something that's aesthetic but not functional or, you know, that kind of?
So I guess my second question, just to follow up. So from my understanding of HB 1110, we are prohibited from putting any design standards on middle housing that is not applicable to single-family homes. Is that correct?
More or less, yes.
I want to echo what Commissioner Ballard said about the height limitation. 28 feet is not tall enough to build a three-story structure. And I think that that can be very problematic to take that entirely off the table. That's all.
If I can add on, this, I can never get his name right, but he does use 28 in a lot of his examples. His pictures are different, I mean, he shows many, many types. But the 28 in his measurements are to the eves. So, you know, so it's much different than the current Everett code, which is much more punitive if you're, you know, 28 feet to the top, yeah. So I think that's a very big difference. Most of those, some of those houses are pushing 32, 33, and maybe 35 feet.
Exactly, and other areas that are incorporating middle housing guidelines into their local codes, their local zoning, they're going to the 35 feet. So, and it is for that exact reason. So I guess that's also a difference in clarification, building height versus height to the eves. And this recommendation says building height, so that's total height, not to the eves. So we should be aware of that distinction. Additional questions or comments on this? Okay, did we close the public hearing? I don't believe we did. Do I hear a motion?
I feel like that meme-
I think that's you, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like that meme where they're like, say the line, and I'm like, all right. So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lark?
Yep.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yep.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, our next proposed amendment is for 10303 21st Avenue West, property there and owned by Marston Glavas. Sorry, the header here on the slide is misspelled. But in your staff report, it's, their last name is spelled correctly. The requested outcome from the applicant is to upzone the property to allow development of middle housing types of six units or more. Staff initial review is that this proposed- Staff initial review is that this proposed amendment is for an area that's in the neighborhood residential geography and as such will be considered for neighborhood residential or what we're calling middle housing in alternative two of the comprehensive plan update. So staff recommendation is that the planning commission determine the requested outcome from this applicant is already incorporated in our periodic update environmental review under alternative three. Those are our staff comments.
Thank you. Is the applicant Ms. Marston Glavas, would you like to speak to?
I'm ready to manage what to say. But today, she said it well.
All right. Commissioners, do you have questions for Ms. Marston Glavas? No? Okay. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing on this item?
I'll move.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Do we have anyone who'd like to speak to this issue? Kathy, do we have anyone online who would like to speak to this issue? Thank you. Do we have questions for staff on this? No? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
So moved.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you. We're ready to move on.
Okay. Two more applications to go through. So this application is requesting a rezone for 906 East Marine View Drive. The requested outcome would be to allow a zone that would allow construction of a four-story mixed-use building with retail on the ground floor. So our initial staff review is that this proposed amendment for this rezone would be, this area is in the connector geography and will be considered for low-rise development, which would be up to four floors in alternative three. The low-rise designation would not necessarily be zoned to allow for non-residential uses. So the applicant has asked for the flexibility to allow retail on the first floor so that we really haven't quite addressed yet. Although the neighborhood business zone, as it stands right now, is allowed, would be allowed as an implementing zone in all comprehensive plan designations. Staff recommendation is that the planning commission should determine that the requested outcome by the applicant is already incorporated in the periodic update of environmental review under alternative three. Those are our comments.
Is Mr. Mees here to speak to his application? Commissioners, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. I'll second.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Do we have anyone present who'd like to speak on this issue? Kathy, do we have anyone online? Commissioners, any questions for staff on this matter? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy.
All right. Our next proposed amendment is from the Port of Everett requesting the expansion of the port compatibility overlay to include freight corridors going north and south from the port. The parcels fronting these freight corridors would then be subject to the existing EMC 19.17.110 port compatibility area requirements. Based on staff's initial review, the proposed change will likely be consistent with criteria in EMC Chapter 1503 as well as the comprehensive plan. Staff's recommendation is that this proposed amendment should be advanced, should advance this request for further analysis and consideration in the periodic update. And those are our staff comments.
Do we have anyone from the Port of Everett who'd like to speak to this issue?
I think, but do they need to speak again during the public hearing? That's a real question.
You're, no, you're an applicant?
You're the applicant.
You're an applicant, so...
Okay. So, yeah.
There's not too much to explain. I did want to bring forth an actual example of why this is important. There is currently two building permits and a public works permit in review with the city on the corner of Pacific and Rucker for a very large multifamily project. It is, as designed right now, in direct conflict with potential plans that the city identified in the freight access plan from 2019. There was a study that was done that in, one of the projects identified included that intersection that shows basically shaving off the corners of the intersection to make the turn radiuses bigger. It identifies the potential acquisition of pieces of right-of-way in order to do that. However, we got very late notice, just kind of through a SEPA notice from, for some underground, removal of some underground storage fuel tanks from a gas station that was demolished. So we commented on that because there was no vehicle in place for us to get notification from the city that a potential project was going to affect the established freight corridor. So by adding our freight corridors into the PCA, we would get notice of something like this and have the opportunity to comment both with the, to the city, with the applicant, talk to them, and try to resolve issues ahead of time before they have real consequences, which, given some of the large cargoes that we haul, we do believe that this project could have some serious freight corridor consequences by not allowing for future changes to the turning radiuses at that intersection. So that's just an example, one particular location, but that kind of puts the spotlight on why.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions for Ms. Gurley?
The example's helpful. I appreciate that. How many units would have been impacted by flattening those radius?
Well, there's nothing there on the corner right now.
No, I know. But if you...
What, is it 214? Is that, how many it is altogether? 241?
Right. But how many if you, so the design right now has a, sorry, I got, I was just looking this up, has a 70-foot curb radius and at least one communication with the port talked about potentially 150 feet. So the difference in that area, how many units would it be? Some.
Yeah. We, an architect has to do a redesign, basically. So I, I can't answer that question.
And at what point, if so, if there was, if the freight corridors were included in the, in the overlay, at what point would you have received notice?
Probably at the pre-app? Yeah? Yeah. Or at minimum, at the building permit application point?
I just closed my 19.17 tab, but I don't know that it's specified exactly at what point, but we would seek to do it as early as possible. So pre-application would be reasonable time.
Yeah. And so for a developer of that scale, they would not have yet owned the property, and therefore it would have stalled that project. You would have been successful in ensuring that someone didn't kind of thwart your opportunity to put in that freight corridor. What if that doesn't happen? What if the freight corridor would, never goes through, but you made those comments and the building were modified? Would be, would Everett be at a loss for those 200, 300 units?
I can't speak to the loss of units, but the loss of the ability to handle certain cargoes would be a detriment to...
Cargos that we don't handle today.
I will, I will let my CEO answer that question.
I'm just curious how this all works. That's all.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Lisa LeFieber, Port of Everett. So the way, in 2015, the city and the port advocated in the connecting Washington package for the 41st Street freight corridor. So essentially turning and smoothing the turning radiuses at West Marine View Drive and Pacific and Rucker, Pacific, 41st, and Rucker. That is a 30, close to $36.5 million project that's been authorized by the state legislature. It's going into planning right now with your public works. So the project is moving forward. So how does, making sure that these, the planning side, the port side, and the public work side all talk to each other so that you're maximizing value. The consequences of not achieving turning radiuses goes against what the city would like to see, which is the trucks not moving cargo through downtown Everett. If we can't achieve getting the cargo out to the highways through the arterials efficiently and effectively, the trucks are going to continue to go through downtown.
I didn't know that they went through downtown Everett today.
They do. Actually, Highway 529...
Everett Avenue.
Everett Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Is the official freight route right now. Idea being, when we get this done, that can be, that designation can be requested to be changed.
Interesting. Okay. It just, it strikes me that at some point, the planning department's going to have to make a decision as to, you know, the permeability of these neighborhoods, what the increase in the width of the street does to cutting off the walkability to downtown certain neighborhoods, you know, how those characters change. So it's, it strikes me that there is some level of competing priorities here that someone's going to have to reconcile.
Public works is going to help. Well, a question, listen, in that, the, is there mitigation then for the property owners for the loss of the land and the value there?
So, Bill, you can design it, and if you get it to them sooner, you can design it in a way that there's no impact or minimal impact. One of the things that is set forth in that plan was that the city was to start right-of-way acquisition, but that, they can only, it's kind of a chicken and egg, right? The city can't do the right-of-way acquisition before they have the state legislative funding. The state legislative funding comes later, but then there's a development plan. So there's this land use compatibility issue where projects are moving forward faster than the state is allocating money to projects to secure right-of-way.
Are we notifying those property owners? I mean, this plan would take a long time to actually get in the comp plan to have this put in place. Have we actually gone out and notified those owners that you're planning to do this?
Planning to, the freight corridor?
Yeah. Along that corridor, do those individual property owners that you're affecting that are going to be, you know, losing right-of, or losing land for right-of-way, have they been notified individually?
So I'm not sure that is a, it is a City of Everett public works project.
You know, to that comment, I think it's not just losing right-of-way with that specific incidence, but it's also the impact on the review process that the overlay currently impacts the Port Gardner neighborhood and, and, you know, further north along Grand. So I think it's, it's multiple issues here is what we're talking about. It's expansion of the port compatibility area. Yeah. Question for staff on this one. It seems like, so with the hall application, it is consistent with 1503, appears consistent with 1503, which is to remove the port compatibility area. But this is also consistent with 1503, which is to expand the compatibility area.
Thank you. I was going to make that point at the beginning. Consistency with the criteria in 1503 and the comprehensive plan, multi-county planning policies and state law and all of that could have been written as not inconsistent with. That might be more, more precise. Consistency with those policies and laws is not, is a necessary but not sufficient condition for making the change. What we're saying here is that it is not inconsistent and as such would be a policy decision, eligible to be a policy decision by the City Council. In other words, you could read the combined body of policy and laws to support either, either way. That's how I see that.
And in advancing this to City Council for further analysis, would that analysis also include an updating of the data associated with the truck traffic? I mean, this, we're talking about a project that was planned in 2000, well, probably data was prior to 2019. I'm assuming that in some ways, shipping formats and routes may have changed. I know that population density has changed since 2019 as relates to, you know, density north of Everett. And so I'm, I'm wondering, does this particular map still resemble the best current data?
The map of the, of the freight routes?
Of the proposed expansion for the, the freight corridors.
The Port of Everett's the one that, that identified those as the...
Lisa's nodding her head.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it is current data. It's the, the shifts in demographics, the increased density to the north, that hasn't changed the shipping routes or the frequency of the needs.
No. And the, the reason the freight routes are identified the way they are and the focus was on the 41st Street freight corridor is because unfortunately, as I'm sure you guys have heard many, many times, US 2 is not adequate, not only for cars and people trying to get across the pass, but it's definitely not conducive to freight. So a large percentage of our freight either comes from or travels to south through I-90. I, I will just note that we are making, in partnership with the City of Marysville and the State of Washington, a rather large improvement on 529 and the flats that allows for truck traffic and, and just traffic in general to go north and south from the flats as opposed to right now, if you want to go south I-5, you have to go East Marine View Drive through the neighborhood. This is project, which is under construction right now, is going to provide an opportunity for vehicles and truck traffic to actually get southbound I-5 from 529 as opposed to go in East Marine View Drive. So that's why you see that the freight route, even though right now it's critical to go all the way to I-5 on East Marine View Drive, it actually stops at 529 because that's where we're going to be asking our truck traffic to redirect.
Commissioner Sullivan, and then Commissioner Lark, I think you also had a comment.
I'm just trying to understand, so it's the naval, it's the overlay over the neighborhood, and then it's the freight corridor. And these are all going to fall under the same rules, but they're just different places?
I take naval out of that.
Okay.
The port compatibility overlay and then the proposal, so the neighborhood is seeking to remove that port compatibility overlay, you heard a lot about that. This freight route would expand the geography of that same port compatibility overlay.
In that shape that we see on the map, right? Like in the shape of a train corridor?
Correct. Although it would turn from a, a line to a polygon to be an area. I, the materials, I think, explain it as the frontage, and so you would take the parcels that front on those roads and draw a polygon around that.
And the intention of having them all be lumped together is for simplicity or, I mean, I know you're not from the port, but I guess I'm trying to understand why they have to be together.
You mean the port, the port compatibility and the freight compatibility?
Correct.
Right. Yeah, the port can speak to that. I, I think we would seek whatever's clearest.
Sure. Good, good questions. It's always good to, to seek understanding. So we have a port compatibility, compatibility area already. We're trying to achieve the same thing, such as notice to larger projects and whatnot. So our idea with this request was just to add on to that and add some kind of, we have, undecided at this point, it hasn't been determined how wide beyond the frontage if we would need to go, you know, 50 feet from street frontage, 100 feet? We haven't gotten that far yet. So basically, it would just be a belt around the freight corridor that would have the same effect, basically, as the existing PCA.
Okay. That's all we needed. Yeah, thanks.
Just a quick anecdote. I remember when I lived in the Arrow apartment building, they brought a, a wind turbine through downtown Everett, and that was basically better than any TV show I could have watched, watching the, just, it just inch around the corners. I do have a couple of questions for the port. Can you guys speak to the disposition of, like, sea lift... Can you guys speak to the disposition of, like, sea lift, sea lift command is at the port, correct? Can you speak to the disposition and, like, understanding what their logistical needs would be, and what would be the Navy's logistical needs? And thirdly, is the, is the Navy, is the Navy station or the port, like, would be, maybe connecting J, J lots in any given sort of humanitarian operation? Over.
Absolutely, though, that's a great question. So, in 2000, one of the things that's changed is the Port of Everett has recently received strategic seaport designation from the Department of Defense. And essentially, what that means is that in a major mobilization or demobilization, we would be moving and have the ability to, and the capabilities of moving military cargoes. Last summer, we did an 835-unit D-mob out of South Korea, and we expect to see that to continue with that designation. In terms of the compatibility, the freight routes that we worked with, they're not only freight routes from a commerce perspective, but they're also from a force protection. So, one of the things that, and the reason West Marineview Drive was built the way it is, is that if there was a major disaster or conflict that required emergency mobilization, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 80-plus percent of our armed forces going to Naval Station Everett live either north or east of the city. I know there's an effort to try to, with the redevelopment of downtown and so forth, to try to get additional housing in so that some of our sailors can live in Everett, which would be wonderful, but the reality is, most of them don't live in the city. And so, these freight routes are also critical ingress and egress from the port and to Naval Station Everett for their armed forces. Did, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's a, that's an interesting point, and I think the points you're making are valid. It strikes me that the port, and the port is serving our community much broader than Everett, and some of the decisions that the planning department's going to have to make in choosing between port and logistics and military vis-à-vis the downtown quality of life that is talked about a lot. You know, we're shouldering some negative externalities as a result of other communities benefiting from the good work the port is doing. So, at some point, it would be interesting to understand how that gets equalized in some way, shape, or form, because there's certain realities that we just have to accept. The port is where it is, it is increasingly successful, it's required at a number of levels, but where's the, the compensation to reflect the negative externalities that the City of Everett has to bear because of that? So, York can figure that out.
The DoD's got money, we can get some of that DoD money.
You know, the concerns that I heard from the community, would you speak to, because what, I'm not hearing a direct conflict between the, the goals of the port and the community's concerns. Would you speak to that? Because I, I think there's a pathway to resolve what the community is talking about and still be able to provide for this necessary, I mean, these are strategic and economic necessities that you're trying to, to provide for.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that it got to, to this point. I, I wasn't aware about the, the concerns on, on the notice and so forth, which it's, you know, everyone's human, but I definitely don't think that there's a wide variety of difference in what the neighbors are asking for and what we're trying to achieve. So I know for sure, if we get in the room, we can come up with a path forward. It's, it really is, it's a notification tool for us. We, the, the more we can, and I, and it is a quality of life for the future residents. I mean, I, I wasn't going to go into the whole history, because you guys have lives and you probably don't want to be here all night, but one of the reasons that this came about is because the Metro Everett Plan rezoned all the land despite best efforts to ask for it not to be, from West Marineview Drive to the port, from, to the west. That was all light industrial, and so there was a built-in buffer between the seaport, West Marineview Drive, and the residents. Obviously, Rucker Hill's always been there, it was built for, during the warehouser mills and so forth, so, for workforce housing, so, you know, that, that's not what this is intended to target. It's really the new development. And so, obviously, we were disheartened when the rezone for Metro Everett rezoned that entire area for essentially residential. You know, we've got our shipyard there, we've got our bulk handling cement operation, we've got our container operations, it's a, it's a heavy industrial use. So, our thought was that you have a heavy industrial use, you buffer it with a light industrial use, and you, and then you backfill it with your urban mixed-use development from a land use planning standpoint. That didn't happen. And so, the overlay zone essentially provides us the ability to work with the developers to make sure that they take into consideration, or at least have awareness and thought, that they can make improvements to their project to improve the quality of life for their future residents. So, for example, if they're building a project over the shipyard, you know, consider triple pane windows, consider extra-thick drywall, consider air conditioning, light glare. There's also issues with the Navy, right? Navy doesn't want a bunch of multifamily, you know, there's different glare requirements and so forth like that. So, it's really a tool to help make sure that there's a quality of life for the future residents that are now being put and allowed to be in this zone, where historically, it's always been light industrial.
So this seems like more work for you, and what I'm hearing you say is it's purely advisory. Is that, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Is that correct? It's purely advisory?
It's purely advisory. Yes.
So it would seem that the notice provision that was suggested in Ms. Hall's text, again, is in alignment with what the port is saying and what the neighborhoods are saying.
I, I think it just comes down to the, to the, I think people, it's, the map, the, where the graphic is, I think the graphic is becoming, necessarily the language and all of that, is, I think it's coming down to the, to the image, right? And so I think that there's ways, the intent is, is large, large-scale development over 10,000. 10,000 came because it was like, well, what is a multifamily or a duplex most likely to be? And that's where the number came from, there's no science to it. You know, so I think that there's, there's a way, there's a path forward to achieve all the goals. It's just, we just have to talk about it.
And I hear, oh, I'm sorry, York, go ahead.
I just wanted to explain a little bit while I, why I took so long to answer the question about whether it's advisory, and the reason was that if the comments that come from the port as part of the required notification illuminate a criteria that is elsewhere in code, that is something that our review process should pick up and should place a condition on a project, then the advisory advice could turn into a requirement, but it would have to be based on an external criteria or ability for the city to condition a project.
York, is it, out of, is that paragraph two or A, like, 17.1110A2? Is that how you're interpreting that? Is that where you're just trying to quote? I mean, or?
No, if, if there's, and that's why I've been trying to think of, like, what would that criteria be? There are modification requests, for instance, that a development may, may, a developer may request modification of a development regulation. There are certain criteria, and that modification can be granted with conditions, for instance, or rejected. It could be that the port makes comments that influence that decision, and in that way, in a roundabout way, this overlay has provided information into an administrative decision that would become binding. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling trying to fit the two partners together, because one, I'm thinking, you know, it's, the port should be doing this, and when you explained, I'm like, well, no, the, the city should have done that, and bottom line, the noticing and, and all that, but I, I also don't, you know, yours is advisory, but when I read the definition of the, the city's response, if they make a recommendation, it seems like you're making a subjective if it's necessary, and I don't understand the definition necessary here. So if it's, it's a noise issue, attenuation, and they say, you know, they need to have windows, and you would, you would direct them to have triple pane, where a standard lot outside this area would not have to have the requirement, which I think falls back into some of the regular, to the other arguments. So, when I read that, that's how I pick that up, and you're right, the, the port is advisory, they're advising you to follow the code, which says, you determine whether it's necessary based on a subjective mean or, or a mean that I don't see.
Right. And it would be elsewhere, and I'm not thinking that we would have the authority to require an applicant put triple pane windows in. That might be wrong, there may be a connection somewhere in there.
Well, I, I don't, that was an example, hypothetical, but it says necessary. So the code just, it, the language just says necessary.
Well, and what I heard the community saying is, they want objective controls around requirements for their historic property, and it sounds like that is something that the port is willing to work with the city and the neighborhoods to clarify in the language.
Yeah, I think that I didn't realize that there was, because I, this is why Laura's talking, I don't know the nuances of what's in the, what different codes and so forth like that, but the intent was always, and to recognize that the neighborhood's there, the existing structures are there. This is really targeted for new development, obviously, with your guys' discussion and the rezoning that's been occurring quite a bit, and this middle housing, and now maybe being able to put multifamily or, or middle housing in single-family areas, which Rucker would qualify, I would think. So it's, it's all of those nuances, but I think that there's some language that could give the neighbors some, some better assurances, but still achieve the same notification goals. And like we said, we're not going to get notification on if someone is adding a, you know, 5,000-square-foot outdoor living area overlooking the port, you know.
Madam Chair, there's a lot of nuances to this that we don't need to solve tonight, and in the interest of moving us along, I would like to offer a motion to approve the staff's draft resolution 2302.
Before, before-
Which advances all of the sun-
Before we do that, we have to close the public hearing, where we're not quite done disposing of this particular item, so we shall get there.
So moved.
I know that you had opened the public hearing, that the port had just-
Thank you. We, we have not opened, we haven't opened. Yes, so, do I hear a motion to open, I'm sorry, were you, did you conclude your comments on the application? Okay, thank you. Did you conclude questions to the applicant on this application, commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
I'll motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes. Do we have members of the public who would like to speak?
I'm sorry you're having to hear from me again, Brenda Kerr, 412 Laurel Drive. To me, this is all to do about notification. I don't understand why the city and the port can't just work about notifying the port when development is happening adjacent or in the corridor. Why do you have to subject property owners to a perceived PCA and the negativities that we have heard going on? And now, if we're in the PCA, we just heard that we may now have to be checking the actual building codes to see if something, a recommendation from the, from the port may fall into the code. I mean, I, I just think it needs to be a notification issue and not putting, jeopardizing our properties, so.
Thank you. Do we have additional folks who'd like to speak to this?
So, again, I'm Bob Kerr, 412 Laurel Drive. I don't begrudge the port having a corridor, I think it's necessary, and they should have it. But why now, you might ask? Didn't they need it last year? How about five years ago? Were they not moving transports then? So all of a sudden, oops, there's a development at the corner of Pacific and Rucker, and now we need to do something. I am painfully aware, as a developer, of the rules, of regulations, all of the hoops you jump through in planning. Public notice, public comments, public meetings. And you mean to tell me that the port doesn't, they've got three people employed as advisors, public advisors, and they're not talking to the planning department? That's just hard to comprehend, that all of a sudden, there's a development that requires a change in overlay. It didn't happen that way. And just finally, I am really disappointed that my neighbors showed up here to talk about a port incompatibility zone, and you wouldn't include both subjects at the same time, because you asked the port to comment on it, and my neighbors weren't here. It's just not fair.
Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this issue online, Kathy? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Okay, did anyone have additional questions on that final item?
Not really a question, but a comment. As I noted to Chair Chatters before the meeting started, it did make sense to me to lump or to aggregate certain related topics together, and as Mr. Kerr pointed out, that would have been nice for the neighbors in the Port Gardner area. I think going forward, to the extent that that's possible, whether it's this issue or another issue, if there are related topics geographically or subject matter-wise, please try to lump them together.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Finch, and you did raise that issue, and, and just so the folks know, in the gallery, the scheduling was already established before the meeting occurred. So, when we, when we as commissioners walked in the door, that was the order in which the items had already been determined to be presented.
Should I just say, if they would have been put together, I think the neighbors would have seen the complexity of some of the issues the port has to deal with, and would have had more compassion for what they're going through, just pleasing us and everybody.
I, I think that's an excellent comment, because I think what we have all learned, those of us who have stayed and listened to all of this, is that there is a pathway to everybody getting their concerns resolved here. And I am very heartened by hearing you folks and by hearing the representatives from the port say that that is what you want, and that you are willing to work together to achieve that end. Additional comments, Commissioner Finch? You have the comment face.
No, I just, I was, I was going to make a, a motion to, to adopt the proposed resolution.
Can I ask if there are any amendments?
Yes, I was going to get there.
Yes.
And to remove the Koenig proposal from that resolution.
I would second that.
I will say.
Who seconded?
Charles Beattie.
Point of clarification, what does that mean? So right now, the staff recommendation is to advance the comprehensive plan policy that were suggested, and in the slides, that was the first slide, and then there was a package of regulations, and the main reason for staff separating those two is that the policies are something that we can handle, and we can see how it works in the process, and that it's a fully complete package. The regulations are really challenging for us to include as a docket application because they are dependent on work that has yet to be done, and they seek to influence or constrain decisions that we have not made. That's the reason that, that we had proposed including the comprehensive plan policies, but not the regulations. So when you say remove, would that be to, if, think about it and clarify?
So I'm, I'm reviewing the staff memo. Are we talking about items one through eight, or items five through eight on page one? Five through eight, I assume.
Yes, five through eight are the proposed policies, and one through four are proposed regulations.
Okay.
So the staff recommendation would be to advance five through eight into the periodic update as a docket application, and...
My proposal needs no amendment to the proposed resolution.
You're withdrawing?
I, I am withdrawing the amendment, yes.
So we are totally, so we are advancing five through eight, which is...
That's what the staff recommendation is and what I believe the motion on the floor would do, yes.
So given that, I would like to move approval of the staff's draft resolution 2302, advancing the items for consideration per the avenues suggested by the staff.
I would actually still like to make that, that motion to just, to remove items five through eight.
You're, you're not suggesting to, the staff recommendation is to advance only five through eight, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm, or...
Yes.
And I'm suggesting that we don't...
So you're suggesting to strike it entirely?
Yes.
Okay.
And so how that could be written is similar to the second half of that recommendation, so I guess just strike the first 10 or so words and say, include the entire application as public comment, basically.
I don't think that's what you meant, Commissioner Atkins, I, I think you are saying strike the application from further consideration, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically.
Just trying to, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to hear what you're actually asking for.
What I'm, what I'm hearing Commissioner Atkins suggest is that none of the Koenig application be included as a specific amendment request in the periodic update in this structure and in this format, but that the, the, what it is otherwise is public comment, there's a lot of similarity between this, this application, and I do intend to do all public comments, the full justice of visibility and, and all of that, but that's how, that's what it is if it's not a docket application, it's a public comment that would be considered and be before you and before the city council for their consideration and persuasion.
Okay, based on that explanation, are there any amendments that are, because your amendment was not clear, so if you want to clarify, you can, but are there, is there anyone who wants to clarify an amendment on this issue?
And you could strike the words before include, I think would do the trick.
I'm sorry?
Strike the words before include.
Okay. So this would stay on the...
I would make a motion, or I would make an amendment, make sure we have a motion on the table.
We don't, I tried to get one.
We probably need a motion if we're trying to amend something.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I would move approval of the draft resolution 2302 as presented by staff.
Second.
Now you consider amendments. I would make amendment to Koenig applicant's request to strike to include.
All the words before include.
Sorry. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Might've been able to do that earlier.
Additional discussion on that proposed amendment?
I would just say that I'd like to keep these issues on the table, so to speak, and so I support the staff's position, and I will not support the amendment.
I think we're ready to take the roll on that amendment.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
No.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
I think we are ready to vote on the entirety of it, on this resolution number 2302, and we already had a motion and a second, so I think we're ready to go, Kathy.
Oh. Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Only 28 slides to go. If the commission, I believe by the rules, we are, we are encouraged to adjourn, and staff would be okay with it.
Yeah, I, we have not completed our agenda, so I, I would at this time entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
When you're ready, Kathy.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Sorry about that.